We'll start the meeting officially then at 7:04. And the agenda was sent out to all. Are there any adjustments to the agenda for tonight? December 15th, 2021. To speak out, I might see your hand if you raise it. I've got the participant list on my right here. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. And I'd like to welcome everyone. And as is traditional, I'd like to go around. This is a little bit difficult. We don't have a square table that we can start at one place and go around. So I'm going to use my list here on the right of participants and recognize you by your first name unless it's necessary to go further. And ask you to introduce yourself and the town you represent. I'll start with myself. I'm Bill Irwin. I'm the Chair of the Board of Commissioners at this time, and I represent the town of Bakersfield. And we'll go to first on my list is staff, and that's Bethany.
Evening, everyone. I'm Bethany Remmers, and I'm staff.
Great. Then Bob?
Bob Berman from South Hero.
Great. And they are, I think, well, they're not, I'm not sure if they're alphabetic or not. So we'll just keep trying to see how it works. Colleen?
Hi, Colleen Steen, Fairfax.
Thank you. Rowena?
Rowena Brown, Richford.
Andy?
Andy Olling, North Hero, and we're definitely not going alphabetically.
I have no idea what the frequency is here. Harold?
Autantown, Harold Garrett.
Thank you, Harold. Kirk?
Kirk Wade from Georgia.
Oh, and just to make it interesting for me, the names move while I'm calling them out. Lynn?
Lynn Douglas, Fletcher.
Thank you. Peter?
Peter Zaymore, South Hero.
Great. Kirk?
I've introduced myself, but Kirk Wade from Georgia.
Oh, sorry. I said they're moving. Richard?
Richard Noel from Highgate Center.
Thank you. Terry? That'd be Terry Tetro. Looks like your mic is on.
Looks like he's frozen.
Hmm, okay. Brian?
Brian Dubey, Fairfield.
Thank you, sir. Al?
Al Bojel from St. Albans Town.
Thank you, Al. Catherine?
Catherine Dimitriak, staff.
Thank you. Dee?
Dean Pierce, staff.
Okay, so that's Dean. Is it, is it Dee? Do you say? Day. Thank you, Day. Daya. Great. Sorry to not have that correctly. Egan?
Egan Murphy, student rep first in Albans Town.
Thank you, Egan. Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Nance, Swanton Village.
Thank you. Greta?
Greta Brunswick, staff.
Thank you. Kathy?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that. Could you please say that again?
I didn't say anything, still.
Oh, this is great. Kathy?
Kathy LaVoy, staff.
We get something new every day. Lori?
Lori Rupel from Fletcher.
Yeah, so you gotta be ready to go. You know, this, you never know where Bill's gonna go with this list here. All right. Peter Jenkins?
Peter Jenkins, staff.
Welcome, Peter. Sarah? Sarah, you're muted. Okay, Sarah may have just sent herself off the, off the call. And I'm looking up the list just to make sure I've got one last person, a guest of honor tonight. I think I've got everyone. We'll then go to Susanna.
Hello, Buenos Aires, everybody. Actually, Buenos Aires, it's after seven. I'm Susanna Davis, the racial equity director for the state. Pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much. We're so glad to have you. We're looking forward to your presentation. And that was my wife laughing in the background, if you heard that. Oh, she's laughing because I've got beads around my neck. Okay. I guess I should, I deserve the response that I get. So that was public comment. That should be duly noted in the minutes that Cheryl DeRue Irwin laughed at her husband's beads.
Peter, did you get that?
All right, so I would like to have a motion relative to the minutes for the October 2021 meeting, if there's someone willing to do so.
So moved.
So I didn't give you that latitude, Al. You've got to be a little bit more specific about what you want to move. I just said I'll take a motion.
I don't have it in front of me. What's the date of the minutes?
This is not working out exactly how we thought it might go. So the minutes are from October.
Okay.
The 2021 meeting, yeah.
I'll move that we accept the October 21st, 2021 minutes as written.
Great. Thank you, Al.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Richard.
What are you seconding, Richard?
The October 2021 minutes.
So this is going to be a test all night. We're going to try each other's skills here. Very good. Whoever wins will be the last person standing, obviously.
When would, when would we have received those?
In the email.
Yeah, I don't think I got it to shoot this month. Okay.
Yeah, it's in the package that I'm looking at here.
It should also be attached to the meeting invitation.
Thank you.
Where'd the Grinch go?
He's, he's a nice snowman now. Are there, is there any discussion about the minutes? Corrections? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion to accept the draft minutes as final. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Very good. All opposed, say nay. Are there any abstentions? Very good. Thank you. All right, we are therefore ready for our presentation. If Susanna, you are ready. We can begin whenever you folks would like to start. I assume Catherine, you've got something to put up for?
I assume that Susanna does, and you should be able to share your screen. If you have any trouble, let us know. I just want to start by welcome you, welcoming you. And I'm very glad we were able to make this work for our meeting and have you join us tonight.
Yes, and first I want to start by apologizing to the group for mixing the signals up. I was supposed to see you at your last meeting, and then Everything Under the Sun had to be scheduled on that day, so it couldn't happen. But I'm glad to be here now with you. I also have a whole lot to cover, and there is not enough time. So I'm going to talk fast, and it's not going to be pleasant, but we're going to be fine. We're going to make it. If you have thoughts or questions, please feel free to interrupt or put them in the chat. I do watch the chat box. And let's begin. You may, I may cut out visually, but you will still have me on audio. I will be with you in spirit. And there we go. Okay. So, good evening. We are here to talk about everybody's favorite topic, systemic discrimination, right? So let's jump right into it. This session really is just a starting point. It is too short. It is always going to be, you could have given me four hours, and it would have been not enough time, right? That's not on you. It's just that we're covering centuries and centuries of rich and upsetting and fascinating and important content in such a short amount of time. This is not a substitute for an equity training or a bias training. You have not been racially inoculated through our conversation. It's just a primer. Also, there are going to be times in this presentation that you might feel uncomfortable, or you might disagree with something that I say, and that's okay. We don't have to agree on everything. But exposure to perspectives different from your own is critically important, and the ability and the willingness to have conversations that are uncomfortable and unpleasant is absolutely a huge part of us getting things right and doing them better. I must begin by talking about this. The land that we call Vermont remains unceded indigenous territory. And the reason that I'm starting this presentation with that statement is because you all are a regional planning commission. It is your job to think about and care about the region, and that region has a dotted line drawn around it, drawn all around your 19 towns and three incorporated villages in one city. And so for that reason, place making is an important part of your work as a group. And so it's very important that we remind ourselves that that place is not ours. It never was. And as we consider the decisions that we make upon that land and with that land, it's really incumbent upon us that we always keep in mind that there were people here before us, and it's important to incorporate these into our work. I also just want to remind us that if we're not speaking, please do mute, because sometimes I get wayward comments in response to what I'm saying when people don't think that we can hear them, but then we can, and it's awkward because it's recorded. So just save yourself the trouble and go ahead and put on, put yourself on mute. All right. So first I want to talk about the difference between equality and equity. And the reason for that is because oftentimes people use those terms interchangeably, but they're not quite the same thing. You may have seen this graphic before. It's a very popular one that's used to illustrate this difference. On the left, you see three people each standing on a crate to look over fence at a baseball game. But as you can see, that's not really working out well for the very short person. On the right, you see something that is depicted as equity, which is that those three crates are rearranged in a way that everybody can see over the fence. It's a very simple illustration. It's very effective, but it does have its limitations, and I do want to point those out. First, this is a graphic that insinuates that there's something inherent about the person that makes you need a crate or some sort of accommodation. In this case, it's the person's height. When we think about racial injustice or other forms of inequity in society in this country, these are arbitrary factors. There's nothing inherent about me as a woman that makes me less capable to participate in the sciences. There's nothing about me as a person of color that makes me less trustworthy, less intelligent, less capable of whatever. So in that way, this graphic does have its limitations, because when we think about a lot of forms of social injustice, those are based on factors that are not inherent to us as people. It's things that we just made up. We don't like people's skin color, but we like people's eye color. Hmm, okay, try to make that make sense. Another limitation of this graphic is that it, it doesn't account for people who can't stand at all, right? Not the most inclusive when it comes to ability, but the biggest one, the biggest one is we're so worried thinking about life as zero sum. Oh, well, you took my box away. You've got two crates, and I've got one, and that's not fair. And we're arguing over the workaround. But we're not asking ourselves, why is there a fence to begin with? Because after all, the distribution of crates is a workaround to overcome a barrier. That barrier is the fence. Why is there a fence? Is it because this is a cost prohibitive baseball game? You've got to be able to pay for a ticket to see it? Why can't some people afford the ticket? Is it because they want to prevent us from a fly ball that may zoom out of the field? If that's the case, we could use netting or perhaps chain link fence to accomplish the same objective, but still make it visually accessible to people. So the takeaway that I want you to take from this is that equality really is treating everybody the exact same, which doesn't really take into account the person's needs. Equity is really looking at where people are situated and making adaptations thusly. Here's another one. It's very similar. I like this one as well. On the top, you'll see equality, where all four bike riders are given the same bicycle. And as you can see, that's not working out for the very short person, the very tall person, or the person who uses a wheelchair. On the bottom, you're seeing equity, where everybody has a bicycle that's appropriate for his, her, or their needs to be part of this figurative life, a figurative bike parade that we call life. Now, why does this matter? Because oftentimes, people spend a lot of time thinking about equality, wanting to treat everybody the same because that's what's fair. But is it? Oftentimes, equality creates inequity. That is to say that when we treat everybody the exact same, we often end up positioning people in ways so that they can't even participate in society. And so when we think about equality and wanting to treat everybody exactly the same, we've got to recognize that not everybody is in the same position. You're looking at a comic right now that satirizes the notion of treating everybody the same. And yes, it's funny for a second, but that last panel really highlights something, that in times of crisis, it is especially important to adapt and to treat people based on their needs and not just based on what we think is supposed to be fair. Because, you know, if I, I mean, I always like to use the analogy, if I have a six-year-old child and a 26-year-old child, and I feed them the same amount of food for dinner, I'm either overfeeding my six-year-old, or I'm starving my 26-year-old. Feeding them different amounts of food doesn't mean that I'm not treating them fairly. It means I'm treating them appropriately for their needs. Now, I want to go back to this notion about in times of crisis, because of course, you all, as a commission, one of your jobs is to think about emergency planning, et cetera. When we think about systemic oppression, inequity, injustice, do you see it as a crisis? And if not, why not? Is it because it doesn't affect you in the same way? Is it because your life isn't on the line? So when we think about injustice and we think about whether it's a crisis, does that matter? Because when it is a crisis, it forces us to do something about it. I don't know how many of you remember when Colin Powell was Secretary of whatever he was Secretary of, Defense or State? I don't know. At that point, I was too young to care about politics. But I'm here now, and that's what counts. When Colin Powell talked about Rwanda, he accidentally called it the G-word. He called it a genocide. And the administration got very angry with him. Why? Because when you call it a genocide, it triggers certain international obligations. When you acknowledge it for what it is, it means you have to do something about it. And that matters, because many of us are concerned more with order than with justice. And people recognize that. We know the difference between how some people in our country are treated and how others are treated. That's why you hear people say things like this, and I hope the audio works. Did you catch that? If you didn't hear and say it, it's probably because I'm on two devices and the audio is not great, but the transcript of what he said is on the right, and I will replay it. You're treating me like a black person, because even in America, we are able to distinguish when certain harms or injustices are more likely associated with some people from different demographic groups. And when others are treated in the same way, it triggers shock, because they didn't think that it could ever happen to them. So let's get a little bit more specific, not just America, but Vermont. In Vermont, this is the second oldest and second whitest state in the nation. But those two data points themselves don't tell the whole story, because when you break that down by racial group, then what you find is that while white Vermonters and indigenous Vermonters have median ages in the mid and late 40s respectively, all other Vermonters of color have median ages in the 20s. What does that mean? It means that the next generation of new parents enrolling children in early childhood ed courses, the next generation of new professionals entering the workplace, the next profession, the next generation of renters and homeowners, the next generation of college grads are more likely to be of color. And this tracks with what we know at a national level, that the millennial and Gen Z age cohorts are the two most racially diverse in the nation's history. So as you're thinking about things like housing, infrastructure, transportation, small business, economic development, early childhood education, childcare accessibility, also think about the fact that pairing those racial and social equity efforts with generational equity efforts is going to move the needle and have a multiplier effect. Here's another one. I'll give you all a moment to find your two counties on this chart. It shows particularly the black population by county in Vermont compared against the black population statewide and in New England and in the Northeast and the United States. Have you found Franklin and Grandale yet? Yeah. So, we can do a little better. I want to talk about land use. So we have often found ourselves in a big loop when it comes to land use. This, what you're looking at right now is a screenshot of a tweet from the former president who says that he's happy to inform all the people living their suburban lifestyle dreams that they'll no longer be bothered or financially hurt by having low-income housing built in their neighborhood. In other words, a public good that is needed by people who are experiencing poverty or housing instability is being framed as a harm to more affluent people. Now, this matters. The framing matters and the language matters, because when we think about how we take public works projects, housing initiatives, or any other measures that affect the physical infrastructure, the social infrastructure, or the service infrastructure, when we think about those things, if we're framing them in such a way that it's being seen as hurting more stable or more well-off people as opposed to helping people who need it, then we've already decided who we want to be, the beneficiaries and the victors. And this, of course, puts us in a cycle. We start off with a land policy. Maybe we say, we're not going to put housing units, we're not going to put residential units more than two stories in a place, because we want to, quote, preserve the character of the neighborhood. Okay, fine. Leads to a regulation. That regulation determines which neighborhood amenities can go in a certain place. After all, if you zone a place not to have commercial, or not to have restaurants, or not to have what have you, that's going to determine which neighborhood amenities can be put somewhere. And the distribution of those neighborhood amenities therefore creates a difference in the benefits and burdens of a given place. Let me give you a specific example. I want to talk about food deserts and food swamps. You may have heard of a food desert. It's a place that has few or no healthy food options. A food swamp, you may not have heard of. It's an area where the unhealthy food options outnumber the healthy food options, usually by a four to one ratio. Now, the presence of food deserts and swamps have disparate impact on community health. It tracks really, really closely with the prevalence of obesity, diabetes, and heart disease. And this matters, because we know that those three illnesses, first of all, were all underlying conditions that exacerbated the pandemic that we've all been dealing with. But also because those three things account for huge disruptions in the academic and job sectors. We know that poor nutrition leads to negative health impacts, and negative health impacts create higher costs for healthcare, and it lowers productivity. Nationally, the cost of diagnosed diabetes has gone up by more than a quarter in the last five years. It now totals $327 billion with a B. And then job absenteeism that results from obesity costs businesses another four and a half billion dollars each year, and it's driving healthcare costs of over $200 billion a year. And that's just from these three conditions, obesity, diabetes, and heart disease, many of which are often caused by the presence or absence of healthy food options in a neighborhood. So if you have a neighborhood that can afford to have a Whole Foods or some other more Vermont-specific health food store, then that's a neighborhood that is probably more likely to have better health outcomes. But just putting a nice grocery store or a farmer's market in someone's neighborhood isn't necessarily enough. For example, maybe you put a nice grocery store in my neighborhood, but can I afford the food there? If not, I can't shop there. Or maybe I use a wheelchair, and you've obstructed all of the aisles with unnecessary displays, and I can't even move through the store. So these are some examples of how neighborhood placement and land use policy can impact people's outcomes at the individual level and at the broader level. So I talk a lot about applying an equity lens, and what I mean when I say that is, yes, of course, we want to be looking at things like the fiscal impact of our decisions, and we want to be looking at things like the operational impact of our decisions. We want to know, maybe we put it through a pestle analysis, right? What is the political, the economic, the social, et cetera? If we are not also adding an equity lens, that is to say, looking at our policies and practices through a lens that incorporates historically marginalized groups, then we're not getting a full picture of what's really happening. Adding an equity lens is not just optional, it is necessary in order for us to get a full sense of whether we're really serving everyone in the community. So how do we do that? I'm actually going to skip the next couple of slides, but I'll summarize what they say. It was to highlight that applying an equity lens means looking past what we think is fair. So for example, we have policies that we think are race neutral, but in reality are not. For example, the New Deal. The New Deal have brought a lot of worker rights and worker protections with it, but not for agricultural or domestic workers. Now, that seems like a race-neutral policy, but in reality, it wasn't, because at the time, those two professions were almost exclusively held by black people. And so it was a way that we could exclude black people without saying that we were excluding black people. Here's another example. Right now, it is good law in the United States to discriminate against potential employees or current employees based on their hairstyles. If you wear locks, you might know them as dreadlocks, which comes from the term dreaded locks, and I can assure you, there's nothing dreaded about our hair. If you wear locks in your hair, your employer can rescind the job offer, because they, according to the courts, that is a race-neutral policy, because anybody can wear locks. But as we know, locks have a very deep cultural and spiritual significance for people who wear them. So it's not enough just to say, well, anybody can wear locks, so that's not a racist policy. If we know that certain groups are going to be disproportionately impacted by the policy, then applying an equity lens means seeing through the so-called racially neutral factors of it and really getting at the impact that it's going to have. Here's another one, really quickly. Workplace injury claims tend to be brought more by white males, and workplace harassment claims tend to be brought more by people of color, people living with disabilities, and women. If you receive a settlement, a monetary settlement in a workplace harassment claim, you are taxed on that settlement. If you receive a monetary settlement in a workplace injury claim, you are not. Right? These are the ways in which we look at things that appear to be race-neutral, but in reality have disparate impacts. Here's another one. I'm gonna, yes. This is a map of divisive school district borders. Now, you don't have to get into the weeds of what that means. Basically, this map puts a red dot or star in every place that has two adjoining school districts that have a certain percentage difference in funding and a certain percentage difference in ethnicity of the student body. Now, Vermont, you will see, has no red dots. Theoretically, we have no divisive school district borders. However, this is misleading, because the reason we don't have divisive school district borders is because we don't even have enough school districts that are majority non-white, or that have enough non-white students to be able to be measured up on this scale. In other words, someone looking at this map who's not thinking critically is going to think, oh, well, Vermont, we're good, because there's no divisive school district borders. When in reality, this is a signal of something much more pernicious, which is that we are so non-diverse that we're not even on the charts. Here's another one. A lot of people don't know this, but in the opioid crisis that has ravaged our state and caused so much harm and devastation to families, black Americans are actually overdosing and dying less. Black Americans are actually overdosing and dying less from opioids than white Americans are. And a lot of people, I think, at first blush would say, well, that's good. That's good for the black community. But in reality, it's indicative of much deeper disparities. You see, the reason that black Americans are dying and overdosing less from opioids is because they're being prescribed opioids at a lower rate. And this is for multiple reasons. One, it is often assumed that they are going to abuse or sell their prescription drugs. And so they are often denied those prescriptions, even if it's appropriate for their care. And the second reason is because they're often prescribed opioids at a lower rate because many medical professionals see black Americans as having a higher threshold for pain and therefore seeing them as not needing those treatments, again, even if it's appropriate for their care. And they don't get those ideas out of nowhere. What you're looking at, and the text is a little fuzzy, I'll read some of it for you. What you're looking at is this, an image from a textbook that was in print up until recently. It was a nursing textbook and the title of this page says, Focus on Diversity and Culture: Cultural Differences in Response to Pain. And it grouped people by race, ethnicity, or cultural factors to describe the ways that people experience pain. For example, it says Asians. Clients from Asian cultures often value Stoicism as a response to pain. A client who complains openly about pain is thought to have poor social skills. It says blacks, and I implore you, please stop using black as a noun. People are not a black. It's weird. It's weird. Please join me in not doing that anymore. But it says blacks often report higher pain intensity than other cultures. They believe suffering and pain are inevitable. Native Americans, it says they tend, it says they may pick a sacred number when asked to rate pain on a numerical pain scale. Jews, it says Jews may be vocal in demanding of assistance. They believe that pain must be shared and validated by others. This is in a textbook teaching nursing students about responses to pain. Now have you noticed yet? Who is not listed on this page? That's right, white people. Why? Well, because they're the default. They're the standard. Nobody needs special instructions about white people because they're not considered different or noteworthy of highlighting a difference. These are some of the invisible ways in which bias is baked in. So, next, let's talk a little bit about how to apply an equity lens to your work. There are some questions that you should be asking yourselves with every budget or policy or other measure that you take. For example, is your proposal going to enhance services to underrepresented communities? Did you involve the community in the design of the proposal? And if so, which ones and who was a part of it? Are you building collaboration? Are you breaking down silos? What data did you use to inform this proposal? What timelines and metrics are you going to use to measure it? If you're proposing a budget cut, who's going to be harmed by that cut? These are some really basic questions and getting yourself into the habit of asking them at every turn helps you not only to create stronger proposals that withstand the test of time and that withstand scrutiny and criticism and lawsuits. But it also helps you to make equity genuinely second nature in your work. To the point where you don't have to make it a conscious effort because it's already part of your system. And so that's what we mean when we say that structural problems require structural solutions. It means that when you have a structural problem, let's just say, I don't know, let's say, we all work together in a building and suddenly the lights get shut off. I don't know, maybe we didn't pay the bill or something. An individual solution would be if management says, okay, team, from now on, everybody's got to walk around with your cell phone, have a flashlight, get a headlamp, whatever you got to do because the lights are out and we don't want anybody falling down because we're not insured for you. That's an individual solution, making everybody carry a headlamp. A structural solution to the structural problem would be pay the bills. Or fix the, fix the wiring, whatever you've got to do, right? So structural problems require structural solutions. Now normally I like to give you a nice quote to end it with, but I'm feeling a little bit saucy tonight, so I'm going to give you an anti-quote, which is this one. It's a tweet and it says, stop complaining. If you don't like this country, leave. Got a broken taillight? Abandon your car by the side of the road. Toilet not flushing? Move out of your house. Never try to solve problems, just give up. And I put this here because oftentimes when we talk about equity or inequity, a lot of people say, well, that's just how we are. And if you don't like it, then you can leave. Well, if we left every time we didn't like something, nothing would ever get resolved. This country has fought multiple wars because of things it didn't like. So, I think that we deserve it and we owe it to ourselves and everybody else to spend the time to fix the things that we don't like. So, I had so much more to say, but it took every ounce of everything that I had to keep it short. So that's what I have for you today. Hit me with the questions. Or don't. Maybe you hated it. I don't know.
I think, I don't know if Phil's frozen. Oh, no, he's not frozen. Oh, you're muted, Bill.
Where my cursor is. So that was great, Susanna, for the introduction. I really appreciated the All Houses Matter graphic. I've had difficulty trying to explain myself to others. That really shows well. Did you have a more specific question?
No, I thought, I didn't know if you wanted to facilitate questions.
Okay, so that would be open for all now if there are questions. I could start. Oh, go ahead, no, Richard.
What do you do when you're not, when you're even a nationality that's not even recognized?
If you say that again, I think I heard you say, what do you do when you've got a nationality that's not recognized?
Yes. Do you know what a French Canadian is? Do you know what a French person is in the United States? It's not mentioned. We're not hogged. We're not put down. I started school, well, I started, I couldn't even speak English. I, I know what you're talking about. I'm not a person of color. But I've been through some of the things that, and I'm whiter, I'm white, white, white. But I couldn't speak English. I was small. I was from a large family. We're farmers.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm really glad you said that because that's a huge point is that a lot of times people make assumptions about who we are and about what our culture or our heritage is. But like you said, you can't just look at a person necessarily and, and know everything about them, right? And the, the ineptly that people like French Canadians and other people in this country and in this state experience was real and raw and very, very painful. And that was cultural, right? And so that's one of the reasons that, and, and this is really a fascinating history in the United States. Who is considered white and when in history? So if you look at the history of immigration law, so often people are moved into and out of the category of white based on things like political representation, right? So for example, we think about Irish people, Italian people. For a short time, Mexican people were considered white under the US census, once black people had been emancipated. It was really just incredible. So like you said, you know, with, with someone like the group of French Canadians or something. If you're shuffled out of the white group and then back into it over time in history, you're experiencing harm that is clearly arbitrary and just made up. But the harm is lasting and it's real.
Yeah, some of our families had to go basically silent that we were part Native American and part French.
Yeah.
They even had a eugenics program in Vermont to sterilize some of us. So it's not just color.
It's, you're absolutely right.
Right.
Absolutely right. Thank you for sharing that.
And I didn't realize till I got older, I was even discriminated against.
And you know what? It's fascinating that you say that because that's true for so many people who grow up with a certain treatment and they're so accustomed to it, they don't know that they're being discriminated against. They don't know that they're being disrespected because for them, that's, that's what they're used to or, or they're not, you know, they're just not exposed to difference. A lot of people of color, a lot of women, a lot of people with disabilities often second guess themselves. They say, am I being sensitive or was that? Was, was that problematic? Was that discriminatory? And we're often sort of gaslit into thinking, well, we're just looking too deep into it. We're being sensitive. But when it happens so often in so many places. At what point do you acknowledge it can't just be me?
And by the way, I wasn't born and brought up in Vermont. I was born, I was born and brought up in Connecticut. For a while.
Well, really appreciate your perspectives, Richard, because I think that they're not often recognized. How discrimination is a form of attack in some cases, is a form of goal. It, it, and it has occurred in so many different ways for so many different kinds of people. And I'm personally remember how I was brought up and some of the jokes that we were taught as young people. That now we would never teach our children that way and for most of us, but for many of us, it was common and for some today it still is. But for you to describe how French Canadians were discriminated and how that impacted you, it's important for us to understand. It's not just the color, the race creed, nationality, religion. It's the way we treat each other. Peter, I see you had your hand up. You had a question. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Susanna. This is the third time I've heard your presentation and I'm learning something each time. My question is, how can we be better able to identify factors that will help us see things through an equity lens? Your presentation is at a very high level, but how do we as a fairly homogeneous group here enable ourselves to understand how to apply that lens in specific instances? What resources are there?
Yeah, the biggest resource is people who are not you. It's like you said, if the group is very homogeneous, get more people. Right? And, and, and you want to be careful with that because you don't want to tokenize people, right? Hey, we need two Asians and a Hispanic person. That's not the goal. The goal is to say, you know, what, I mean, start with looking at the demographics of your, I did commit this to me, nineteen towns, three incorporated villages in one city, right? Who's in there? And does the demographic of this group align with that? And more, more than that, because you don't just want to pattern match, you also want to exceed what that pattern is, right? It's like if we have 1% of women in sciences. The correct answer is not to say, well, we'll devote 1% of our funding to those people. Well, no. Right? Because that's not really going to move the needle. That's going to keep the needle right where it is. So the first thing to do is look at the communities you serve and ask yourself, are you reflective of those communities? And not just by race and ethnicity. I mean, I, I talk, my job says racial equity, but I can't help myself. You've got to think about people living with disabilities, members of the LGBTQIA+ population. And here's the thing about a lot of these groups, you never know when you're going to join them. I mean, you may not have been born as a brown person, so you might think, well, you know, racial equity may not affect me, but guess what? One of, one of your grandchildren might be biracial. Now it affects you. I wasn't born as a person living with disabilities, but if I'm running behind the ice cream truck and I get hit in traffic, I might become a member of the community living with disabilities. In which case now I suddenly have to learn how to navigate a world that I thought I was immune from. So think, I mean, when we age, when we age, we often become people living with disabilities just because of the natural aging process, right? So thinking about the ways in which we cross in and out of these communities is big. Another thing that I would say in terms of using an equity lens, you all are going to be engaging with abundant sun and they're absolutely excellent hands for you to be in. So I know that they'll be able to fill you in more on those resources. But another thing that you can look at is our action and allyship guide. I will put the link into the chat. And it's just a simple guide of everyday things that you can do to, to get involved in, in equity. The other thing I would say is, read a lot. Just consume a lot of information. There are some really great websites like actually Colorline is a good website and also ThoughtCo. I'll put all this stuff in the chat, but those are some good starting points because they're accessible. I also, I think I saw Al with, with a hand.
Yes, thank you, Susanna. I have two, two questions. The first is, first of all, I enjoyed your presentation. Are you going to put online your PowerPoint?
I certainly could if you like.
I would. I, I think we all appreciate it because there's some, you went through a lot of thoughts very quickly. And given my age, I need to be, see it again. The second question, right? The second question I have is more systemic, I think. But the rhetoric about critical, critical race theory. So I was curious and I wanted to learn about, I thought it was actually a book that defined Jefferson was a rapist and Washington was a slave owner and all this. And when I picked up a preamble to Understanding Critical Race Theory, I was amazed, this particular book, a primer two. It has each chapter with questions and answers, questions that we can discuss in groups. And I find I'm halfway through the book now and I've, I've enjoyed each chapter. I'm wondering to what degree, particularly in your state role, you could encourage the Department of Libraries to hold book review clubs in each of the libraries where the community could, or at least some of us could get together, read the book together and talk about it because then we would become, I think, greater understanding and advocates for equity. Right now, it's, it's sort of a mystery term for a lot of us.
Al, you cut me deep just now because when you mentioned the Department of Libraries, it reminded me that we just lost our state librarian, Jason Broughton, who just took a job at the Congressional Library. The, the, what is it? The National, I, I don't even know the name because I'm so angry at them for taking him, but whatever it is that he, they've got him. And I have to note that Vermont with Jason Broughton was the only state in the country that had a black male state librarian. Out of fifty, there was only one and we had him. And that's why I don't form emotional attachment. But in any event, yes, I'm glad that you asked because the state, so the Vermont Humanities Council does do the annual book read. And the last couple of years, I think the book has had a specifically equity theme. But also, we did arrange once, the Lemoyle County has a group called the Racial Equity Alliance of Lemoyle. And they wanted a local book club. And so I actually did connect them with the libraries, with the state librarian, and we did arrange for them to have a community book read on something like that. So if you are interested, then I'm sure that libraries would be really happy to help out with something like that.
Okay.
And I just want to add because the, the topic that you were talking about was on CRT. And I'm glad that you have been open minded and educating yourself about it because it really is very much a straw man. And, you know, a lot of people, it, it's being conflated with the accurate teaching of history in schools. And that's a really, really dangerous equivocation because history happened. We know it happened. We wouldn't be speaking this language on this territory if there hadn't been a lot of murder, genocide, and other things, right? Not talking about it doesn't make it not true. All it does is prevent us from being able to repair the harm. And so when I think about that topic and I think about how much energy has been spent arguing against something that many people don't even, can't identify and don't understand. I do think that community conversations like those are, are important. So thank you for raising that. I also see a question from Daya in the chat. I'm sorry, Bill. I don't want to take over your moderating duties. I just.
No, I wanted to do it, but it's hard to interrupt you. I'm glad you did it yourself.
I know. I'm so damn chatty. Daya asked if there are communities in Vermont that have successfully changed local policy to be more equitable? Yes. Oh my gosh, yes. And they are the shining stars of my life. So some of the towns around the state have adopted what is being called a Declaration of Inclusion. Some of you may be familiar with it. Local community members have been shopping that around with great success. And that is one that the state also has endorsed and it's a great first step because it demonstrates that the town is serious about equity and is willing to make a statement as such. And it is still a first step because it is a statement. And you know that we want you to move, we want you to do the statements, but we want you also And you know that we want you to move, we want you to do the statements, but we want you also to, to keep moving with the action. Another thing is that I believe eight, no, five municipalities around the state have adopted a modified version of the fair and impartial policing policy to protect people who are undocumented. That's really important, especially for counties like Franklin, because we know that with the farm community, migrant workers are the backbone of the industry of, of ag. And we know that ag is the backbone of Vermont and we've got to protect people regardless of what the federal government thinks about them. Because let's be honest, when have we ever really agreed with the feds on very much? So that's another policy that has been gaining traction and I'm happy to see that. Another one is that the town of Brattleboro has adopted a new public safety plan that as far as I understand, has really been informed by the needs and the input of communities of color and people who have experienced psychiatric distress. Because a lot of times we think about responding to mental health crises, that is one group that is often left out of the conversation, but they're very much directly impacted. And gosh, there's a whole lot more happening around the state. I can't think of it at the moment, but, but yeah, I always try to encourage people to check in with people from other towns. A lot of people think they're going it alone with their select board and they're not. There are a lot of towns in the state doing this work and, and, and you deserve to be supported.
In that vein, Susanna, is there a location on a state website, for example, where there are examples, where there are some places where people can get ideas, share ideas? Because I think it is difficult for a lot of people to understand what the first steps are and how to build from there.
Yeah, so I, I have been pushing a dream project of mine for a long time and I can, I can feel it. It's gonna happen. The short answer to your question, Bill, is not yet, but coming soon to a town near you. There will be a central place where municipalities can get together and have a forum and a platform and regular convenings and support from the state.
Well, I don't know if I can make, I don't know if I can make the offer personally, but I will to some degree here. I work for the Department of Health and we've declared inequity, a public health crisis. And it's important, I think, for us to recognize how in just that one way, public health, there are so many difficulties. So many, I hate to call them costs, that we don't recognize. And I think that the Health Department might be willing to partner with you in that. I don't know if you know Heidi Klein. Heidi is our health equity and community involvement coordinator. And she may be able to actually find some way to partner with your efforts and ambitions to have a website, because I think it would be helpful for us to see how much this costs us. Again, I hate to put kind of dollar figures on it because it's so personal, but it really does. And we can achieve so much when we do partner together.
Absolutely. I've actually been spending a lot of time on calls with Heidi because I'm part of the hiring panel for the new Health Equity Director. So she's probably getting sick and, but I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you, Bill. I also see in the chat that Daya has asked, is there any policy that I've observed in Vermont that is really sneakily inequitable? And I, I can think of one, it's not necessarily a sneaky inequity, but it is one that certainly wasn't thought of. And, and if they had been asking the questions that I showed you on the screen, that wouldn't have happened. And here's what it is. The legislature recently passed a bill, Tobacco 21, which among other things criminalizes the possession by a minor of tobacco and tobacco products. Now, the problem is that there was no religious exemption to that law. And what that did was created a racial injustice because the indigenous community sees tobacco as a sacred plant. And they often use it in rituals and ceremonies like the conveyance of prayer or purification. So by not having a religious carve out to that rule, similar to what we do for Catholics and others who take communion wine as minors, what we've done effectively is criminalize any Abenaki minor who wants to use a sacred plant to participate in a ritual. That's one policy that appears to be racially neutral on its face and that appears to be a, a matter of good order, right? Who doesn't like public health and reducing smoking, et cetera? But in reality, it did have a disparate impact on an ethnic group and it still hasn't been rectified. So that's one that, that bugs me to use, to use the term you used in chat.
So I just noticed that you have put a webpage in the chat and actually it's got some really great resources and connections and documents there. So thank you. I think it's, it's more than just a dream for you. I think you've actually accomplished a great deal and really appreciate what you've put together there and I hope to see more growth in that. And as you know, our Regional Planning Commission has ambitious goals for learning. And then from what we learn, try to build actual foundations for the future so that equity, justice are all built into the policies that we try to administer through the commission itself and then through our municipality. So this has been a really great kickoff for us. I'll make sure that there are no other questions. You can raise your hand, you can just unmute your mic. You can also put something in the chat, but we want to make sure we take every opportunity for questions now before we close.
I am also going to send you all the, just the one page of those questions for you to ask yourselves as well.
That's great. And while you're doing that, Daya will just share with you, I find lots of sneaky ways of imparting inequity and injustice on our fellow people. Too often, it's, it's almost daily. It's, it's so common and it's, it's so sad. And I hope that we can bring them out into the light and change them. And I'm glad you're asking these questions.
Thank you. You know, I suppose the last thing that I'll say is I, I really appreciate the approach that you all are, are taking. I, I appreciate that you are putting the, the work into this. And I would just say that when I talk about this, I'm still refining the metaphor. But I'm going to stick with the governor's automotive affinity and use the metaphor of a car. You know, you're, you're picture yourself driving and you see that your wheel is kind of pulling in, in one direction. What do you do? Of course, you've got to sort of compensate by actively turning it the other way. Now, that's not to say that you're trying to change lanes or make a turn, but you've got to lean affirmatively in a direction just to be able to stay neutral, right? And so a lot of times when people think about equity work, they see it as like a specific handout to specific groups, you know, you're unfairly pre benefiting this group. But in reality, we exist in a system that's been designed to have a steering column out of alignment for so long that the active work of moving just to stay neutral to some people feels like an injustice. And so I just encourage you all to remember that just because you're taking affirmative steps in another direction, we're still just getting closer to, to zero. We're still just straightening out. We're not even getting to privileging other people yet. So I just encourage you, I always tell people, step zero in this work is lower your guard and open your eyes, right? It's easy to feel defensive about this, but that makes it all the more difficult. I guess if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna beat this metaphor to death, I guess coming into this work from a defensive posture is like trying to drive with your parking brake on, right? You, you'll, you'll go somewhere, but it's gonna make that sound you don't like. And then the last point that I would make is, once you're done with the listening and the learning, then comes the doing and you've got to tangibly invest in this because all of the low cost and no cost options will be exhausted quickly. And that's when you got to do the tougher stuff. So I will be with you to and through that point.
Well, great. Perhaps we'll have an opportunity in the future to bring you back and share with you in a report what we've been able to accomplish after we've learned. And we thank you again for starting us off on this journey and in such a really pleasant way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be on for another minute or two, just putting links in the chat. Don't mind me. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Susanna.
All right. So this is a good place for us to transition to what I was describing. And that is, what are we going to do? You know, this, as I called it a moment ago, journey started with some examples of what other entities in the state have done to try to describe what they thought about justice, equity, diversity and all of the issues of our collective population that inhibit us from accomplishing the most that we can. And that we wanted to move through a period of some months to learn about what the justice, justice, equity and diversity elements are, how they can be applied in planning and how they can be applied in a regional planning commission, how they can be applied in our communities and as individuals, before we actually put together specific plans with specific steps. And to do that, we have brought in a specialist to help us with this process. And that specialist is in body of people called Abundant Sun. And the executive committee has learned about them to some degree. But Catherine, you know much more about Abundant Sun from your direct interactions with them. And specifically, you understand to our arrangements that we're working out with them for the coming months. Would you mind please sharing with the group here what you know about them and what we're going to do with them specifically?
Sure. So Abundant Sun is a consulting firm that specializes really in ethical leadership, corporate governance, institutional change. Dr. Jude Ruckelli is the principal of Abundant Sun and she is the person we'll be working with over the next year. And she'll be taking the board and the staff through a journey that they call the Epic Training. And Epic stands for Ethical Performance Improvement Campaign. And so Abundant Sun and Dr. Ruckelli really come at the ideas of justice, equity, diversity and belonging from an ethical leadership perspective, which I thought really was in tune with how this board thinks both collectively and individually in terms of how you want to lead and how you want to be an example, both for the state and for the municipalities in which you live. And so she'll be working with the board over the next year, coming to about every other board meeting, sometimes a couple of times in a row, to really bring a series of learning to the board about equity and belonging, about civics and government visionary leadership, great governance, great engagement skills and building long-term strategy. And so within those ideas, we'll be focusing on the issues of equity and belonging, but they're really under the umbrella of this idea of ethical leadership. She'll, on the time she's not at the board meeting, she'll be giving us homework that we can read about or videos we can watch or discussions that we can have. And so it really will be a bit of a year-long curriculum to, to move us forward in this learning as we're also doing, you know, because we will be updating, beginning the update of our regional plan, we'll be embarking on some projects. So what we're doing at the same time we're learning, but it's a really great opportunity to do this concurrently. And I did include on the agenda, that is a live link that will bring you right to Abundant Sun website. So you can learn more about the firm and the work that they do. I thought you muted, Bill.
I do that so you don't hear things in the background, but it gets me in trouble so often. Yeah. So just in case you didn't notice it, what Catherine was referring to in the agenda, there's a blue underlined Abundant Sun. If you click on that, you go to their website called Vision Beyond the Horizon. And I'm glad that you mentioned the regional planning effort too, Catherine, because this is really quite beneficial for us to be embarking on these two efforts concurrently. Specifically that we're trying to understand how we, from our position of leadership in the region, can try to bring more justice, equity and diversity to our communities, to ourselves and to the region. But also we're going to incorporate a lot of that in the regional plan. And we have already with a meeting, was it Monday night? Started to discuss how we'll be doing that. And so look forward to sharing with you through the work of Elizabeth and the Regional Planning Committee, where we are with different chapters of the regional plan. And that will be coinciding with these meetings every other month with the, the, the board. And that I think is going to give us a, a real immersion that I think is going to benefit us immensely. So I'm really excited about it. I'm very happy to be in this position as chair for this. I know I would like it regardless of whatever position I have in the commission, but it's really exciting to be chair during this time. So that's one of the next steps for 2022 is Abundant Sun. The second is the regional planning. But we have our usual meetings for the year. Are there any other special events that we see coming up for 2022? I know that there's been some committees that have asked for certain parties to come to, to give presentations. I don't know if you've made any arrangements for 2022 yet or not that you might share with us, Catherine?
I haven't made any yet. I'm waiting to work out the final schedule with Jude before I look at inviting other speakers and guests at board meetings.
Right. Yeah, I know that a number of the committees that I sit in on, there's a lot of topics that come up and.
More topics than we have months.
Right, right. So as we move to the next element of the agenda, wanted to talk about our year that we've had. I, I think it's quite remarkable. First, I don't think any of us really thought we would still be immersed in COVID as we are at this time of the year. I, I know personally, as someone who was working directly in COVID on a daily basis, we thought it was mostly over in July and it's almost been worse since August through the current month. And it's almost been worse since August, uh, through the current month. And yet I think that it's fantastic what this body has been able to continue to do. Uh, there've been a number of people brought in, uh, for staff. Uh, we are, um, embarking on new long-term work. Uh, for example, in energy planning, in climate planning. Um, also of course with our, um, commitment to the water resources that are critical to the region, uh, region of islands and waterfront and rivers coming from the mountains to feed all of that. And, uh, it's actually been, uh, in a year where we've had so many difficulties. Our commission has grown, um, immensely actually. And, um, it's even, uh, in some ways made me wonder, did we get a big enough building? Uh, when, uh, looking at the current building that we have. Uh, we have great staff with us. We have great, um, leadership with Catherine and Bethany. And, um, all of the senior planners who've been leading their projects for so very long. And obviously at this time of year, we want to not only be happy and healthy, but we want to recognize all of the great work that all these folks have done, including all of you. You know, the, the real work of this commission obviously is with the staff who provide reports to us. But it's also in all of the committees. And we have excellent committees where uh, I've been able to sit in on all of them now in my brief time as chair. And it's, um, just so amazing to hear the, the, the debate, to hear the questions. I always rate things, uh, on what kinds of questions are being asked. If you've got really challenging questions, it means that you're digging and probing into places where real work needs to get done. And we ask a lot of really great questions and I'm so proud of all of the staff and all of the committee. It's also been a time of hardship for, uh, a lot of people. And I, I do want to take a moment here to recognize a, a couple that uh, I'm aware of and then ask if there are others in our community that we should, um, take a moment to remember them and to, um, uh, think of their family and friends, uh, because they've passed. Um, specifically I refer to Pat Howrigan, um, who passed away not too long ago. A long time member of the Board of Commissioners. And then also I think of, um, Ellen, uh, Barclay Morris's wife who passed away, uh, in, in a near, uh, time to, uh, Pat. Um, are there others from your communities that have been important to our regional planning processes, our municipal planning and support processes that you would, uh, like us to know have passed and we should include them in our moment of appreciation? Yeah.
Excuse me. I think Bob Johnson, who served on the, uh, Regional Planning Commission, uh, was the husband of the town manager of Colchester. Uh, uh, excuse me, of St. Albans.
Thank you. And that was Bob Johnson?
Yes, that's correct.
Are there others?
Were you gonna say that too, Kathy?
As well as Connie Burns.
Yeah. So, um, I'll talk about Robert. You can talk about Connie. So Robert Ostermeyer was the director of Franklin Grant Out Community Action and the resident of the Islands. And, um, we lost him suddenly, um, about a month ago. And that's a huge loss for the community and the people in which he served.
Thank you, Catherine. Then, um, you want to talk about Connie Burns, Kathy?
Yes, uh, Connie Burns was at F C I D C for years and before that, um, with USDA and, um, had a huge impact for economic development in this community and her, her ability to work with, with the financial side of it and support our, um, our businesses was, was incredible. So, um, a great, a great loss for us. We'll feel, feel that impact and the impact from the loss of Robert for many years.
And, um, if there are others, I'll, I'll gather those too. But I just wanted to mention, uh, Helen Hunt here in, um, Bakersfield. She actually asked me years ago if I would be her partner from Bakersfield on the Regional Planning Commission. And, um, any of you that met her know just, um, how devoted she was to improving, uh, our community here. And also how energetic, uh, she was, uh, in everything that she participated in, including in her eighties hiking through the woods, um, near our home here, uh, in Bakersfield. Um, are there others that we would include in this moment?
Remember Lloyd Touche was on the board and he got tragically hurt in a car accident two years ago.
Thanks, Richard. Okay. So, um, if you would please join me in, uh, a moment of thoughts and prayers for their friends, their families and, um, that we can live up to the good that they did, uh, in their lives, in the lives that we carry on after. Thank you. Thank you all. I would also like to take a moment to thank those who have been serving our commission for years now. And we try to capture those who have served for years that are uh, of a, a number that is memorable. Um, and I'll start, um, first with, uh, those who have been with us, uh, for five years now. Um, and I'll, I'll start with Lori Rupel. Um, Lori is here tonight. We want to thank you for your, um, incredible service and fact, your leadership on a committee here within the Planning Commission. I also want to recognize Leonard Sharon. Um, Leonard, of course, um, has a brother who we'll recognize in a moment. Been here, uh, even longer, but also Leonard for five years. Um, then Martin Manahan, uh, for five years of service, starting in November, twenty sixteen. Um, this fourth individual for five years is kind of not really giving a full shake that is deserved. Um, this is Barclay Morris's second, um, time with the commission. But he's reached five years again, um, with us and we thank you for your service and good humor. Barclay especially. Um, and I really appreciate your, uh, good Vermont images that you, you, you share, um, in, in all the, uh, pictures that we see of you. And then lastly, for fifteen years of service, incredible, Claude Cheryl. So, um, thank you all, um, for all the years. I know many of you here have celebrated uh, anniversaries of this length or longer, and we really appreciate all that you have done. Are there any other kinds of recognition that, um, any of you would like to provide at this moment before we get into commissioner announcements? Well, we have, uh, not been able to get together two years in a row for our Christmas holiday, New Year holiday, um, celebration. Uh, we were able this year, however, in August to get outside and have a wonderful, uh, opportunity of fellowship with this good commission. We hope that in the coming year, maybe we can do both. We can have a summer outdoor outing again. I, I think the venue we had previously was great. Uh, but also we hope that we might be able to get back together to celebrate the holidays as we have traditionally for quite some time. Again, I hope it might be at the library as we have previously. But, um, with that, we'll move to the next to the last, uh, item on our agenda and that's commissioner announcements. Are there any? Yes, uh?
I'm hoping that by the, our next meeting, the St. Albans Town will have appointed a second representative to the commission, replacing Sarah Had.
Excellent. Good news. Any other commissioner announcements? Okay. I would entertain a motion that might be appropriate at this time of a meeting.
I move, I move that we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Richard. And, uh, all in favor, I know we don't have to vote, but just for formalities, all in favor, say aye. And I wish you all the happiest of holidays and the healthiest of this celebratory season. Take care.
And you also.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Happy New Year, everybody. We'll see you all in twenty-two.